Please stand for the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there changes, additions, or corrections to the minutes as they're presented? If not, they'll see my desk presenters, thank you. Open forum, there's no one here, so we will move right off, but if there were, we welcome your comments. Agenda changes, we have two, my understanding is under new business, 12C appointment of staff, and that's highlighted on the new agenda that Tina has passed out. And then because of high school open house, we'd like to change the agenda and move the administrator's report of Mr. King's portion up and right to the forefront. So if you could move to that next, that would be good.
And Grace is here, perfect timing. So you received the numbers for participation for our fall sports. We have strong participation across the board, our teams are doing exceptionally well. I know our girls varsity volleyball team is undefeated right now, girls soccer is undefeated, they're close, their best competition was a 0-0 tie against Lansing last Saturday, a week ago. Our boys soccer team has one loss on their record, and then they had one of the best high school soccer games I've seen in a long time, when they beat Lansing 2-1 on this past Saturday evening. Our football, our football team with the merger is 1-2 right now, they got their, picked up their first win this past weekend, but they, both of their losses were by 2 points in nail-biter games, they were both, both great, great games. So cross-country, I honestly, I don't have an update in terms of their record, but I think they're doing pretty well as well, usually undefeated this postseason. So, which brings me to my next point, which is this week is homecoming week, and I would love to encourage all of you to come out and see any or all of the events, you can be like me and just live here. So I just belied it here from a modified boys soccer game for my son, and they were up 4-0 at half. This evening is the, am I gonna, am I gonna steal your thunder?
You are stealing.
Okay, so Grace, Grace will give you the update on all the things that are going on this week, there is a ton of sporting events going on this week. But it would be great to see any or all of you at any of the games this week, there's something, every night there's something for everybody as well. Any questions about the sports teams, or the numbers, or any status updates about things?
We have good spirit, don't we?
We have good spirit, and it keeps growing, so, and we're very proud of it.
And very high performing teams?
Great, high performing teams, but not just high performing, but good character as well. They are playing class across the board. I am very, very pleased with what we're seeing on our, from our teams, so.
In terms of participation, John, sort of from maybe through your five-year historical perspective, is that something you can tell us whether they're, I mean, either off the top of your head, or just sent back to us? You know, are numbers up-down, are percentage-wise, are they about the same as they've been?
I would say we're pretty, pretty stable, we've been pretty consistent with all of these. You know, the one that we monitor the most has been football because of the merger and some controversy around that. There is, there's a little bit of feedback that there are some kids that decided not to play because they didn't want to take the bus ride up to South Seneca, which I understand, but I, so I'm only going with what we have. We have 13 boys playing varsity football, we have 10 boys playing modified football, and both teams are doing well.
Modified, mine comes on the modified team, and they had their first game last week, and they won 30 to 8.
Wow.
And the coaches from the other team thanked them for their good sponsorship.
Good.
And so their second game is Thursday.
So Grace can, can Grace tag team high, because Grace also has to leave because she's in NHS, helping out with open house.
Why don't we move right to student report?
So tonight is open house, and a lot, most of the members, or else Mrs. Evans is gonna be pretty upset with us, most of the members of NHS are helping out with it, and at our meeting last week, we named Secretary Katerina Gabernik, Vice President Cindy Preston, and I was named President of NHS. Tonight, after open house, is the Raider Bowl, which I am playing in, so if you want to watch me make a record number, number of fumbles, you should come. Tomorrow, girls soccer, there's a varsity girls soccer game at 7:00, and a cross-country meet at 5:00. Wednesday, there's a boys soccer game at 7:00. Thursday, Family Feud, and I believe the auditorium is at 7:00.
Yep.
And then our homecoming game is at 7:00 on Friday, and we're gonna pay, we're gonna be paying respects to local veterans, and naming our homecoming king and queen. And then the dance is on Saturday from 8:00 to 11:00.
Did I hear you mention, is volleyball playing this week at home, or not?
Volleyball is at home on Thursday.
Okay.
Didn't have that, sorry. Yes, volleyball is playing.
And there are other modified games as well, that are sprinkled in around the mix, but those are highlights.
Do you see sport fields? Busy.
Yes. They look beautiful.
Do you off the top of your head remember the last time we actually had a girls hockey game?
A girls hockey team?
Yeah.
We've never had a girls hockey team.
No, we've never had.
No, we have had athletes that have merged and played with Ithaca.
But I noticed it in the, and I looked, flipped to my right, I was, I don't, couldn't remember that we had one, but.
We don't have any pool.
But she came in at the end of last week.
Oh my god, it's ice hockey for the girls. Wow.
Yeah, that's the, that's the merger that we are working, that we're working on.
So field hockey, it's dead?
Oh, we've not, we've not had a field hockey program.
Which is such a shame.
So when there's a merger like that, what student policies do, students have to follow?
Same.
Like if they don't have any, like if they have bad grades?
They follow our school rules. So regardless of where the team is located, they're gonna follow our, our policies.
And then their coaches know that.
And the coaches, the nice thing is that we have a coach from Truittburg, as well as a coach from South Seneca. So there's, so there is communication and connection.
In football, we're talking.
Wouldn't the assumption be if, like, we had a hockey player playing for Ithaca, they'd follow the Ithaca Code of Conduct for that sport?
Oh, okay.
But the Code of Conducts are very, very similar.
Like Ashton signed one for in South Seneca.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Grace, or for Mr. King? Feel free to be excused to go to open house.
Thank you.
So this is your new address, right, Mr. King?
Yeah. Can you leave it here? It's 7:00 AM till 7:00 PM.
Thank you. The cot in the nurse's office is very comfortable. Okay. Words of recognition, acceptance of resignation, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts the resignation as presented for Mr. Russ Hughes, our longtime groundskeeper, so Russ has been with us for 30 years of service.
Good guy.
Moved a lot of lawns, plowed a lot of driveways, et cetera, et cetera.
Always with a smile.
Always with a smile, yeah. So, a motion to accept.
Second?
Second. Any discussion? I know we'd probably like to say no, but I'm not sure it would have any influence, so I'll call to vote those in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion passes. We hope he enjoys his retirement. Correspondents? None, okay. Committee reports, Douglas, do you have anything from Bosie's or Central New York?
Boy, do I.
Okay.
And somebody banging up the start to the year, 5 meetings in 5 days, kind of as a writer, some sort of. Yeah, let me see, the first was the, our Bosie's general meeting. And as always this year, Bosie's did stagger their opening so that the young ones aren't just totally overwhelmed by the hordes coming onto campus. The first couple of days, they gave them a couple of days to sort of settle in. First 2 weeks have gone very smoothly, as always, there are more requests for Bosie's placements than we have space, so some students are attending other Bosie's programs in either Cortland Madison or Key government data programs. Overall, summer school is quite successful, students in the career skills program were given for the first time an opportunity to work as volunteers for the Cornell Botanical Gardens, and I guess they really had a blast. They helped with pottings, cleaning, labeling cuttings, weeding, mulching, and cutting back plants, all skills that are very necessary in the greenhouse trade, and could very well, you know, pay off in a future apprenticeship or job. Let's see here. Those enrolled in summer school did do fairly well across the board, as always, both the Bosie's campus and one of the other schools were packed for summer school, and Ithaca is always provides the lunches for everyone, which is really a very nice service. And I don't know whether we have statistics yet on how the Bosie's summer academy year went.
It was very successful.
I know it was successful, I mean, I heard the kids were sort of, had to be pulled away at the end, or more, but that's great. So, anyway, that covered pretty much summer school. We will be joining Cornell in its Computer Sciences for All Consortium, bringing computer science to all K through 12 students. Eight of our schools in this region have been selected to pilot the Computer Science for All instructions across grade levels, so we will all be participating in that this year, I gather. Major goal for the consortium is to bring more consistent computer science to each, program to each district, beginning with kindergarten and continuing through graduation. This should help prepare students for a rapidly evolved, yeah, evolving economic landscape that requires a solid foundation of computer literacy. And we are setting a new goal at Bosie's to have 17 nationally certified teachers by, and I can't believe they're going for this, 2022. And it's asking a lot, it's a lot of professional development, but we'll see, it's a, it's a great goal to which to aspire. Then, at our Bosie's executive meeting, which was last Friday, our, talk much, Regents New Regent, Regents, Regents New Regent, Susan Miller, some of you may know or remember her. She was a former longtime educator in Ithaca, and negotiated some pretty tough contracts that lady did. She's now our Regent. She visited our board meeting, and I think a lot of what the Regents are looking at right now revolves about the fear of an impending teacher shortage in the area, and a lot of discussion about this at present, you know, looking at different ways of certifying teachers, even looking at a sort of different pipeline for administrators, just trying to buck up the game a bit, because particularly in the sciences and math, it's getting to be rather difficult to find educators. Not nearly as many would-be teachers have enrolled in New York teacher colleges over the past couple of years. Those who have enrolled are having a very difficult time finding mentors. Regents are looking at the possibility of a one-year mentorship following a successful graduation from a teacher's college. This would, of course, allow a full year of teaching experience with a true mentor, actually working collaborative with a teacher on a full-time basis. Obviously, it's going to involve some money. You would have to compensate both the teacher and, and the working students. So that's one option. Susan finds herself constantly questioning 2 things. The first, what awkward is Regents mandating, and how are our schools dealing with the additional funding such mandates bring to us? And they do, I mean, some of them are quite expensive. And the other is, if our teachers really need 78 hours, or do our teachers really need 78 hours of straight professional development, and where should the time come from? If indeed that's what we're going to be asking them to do. If you schedule professional development, have a full day of training, and allow teachers time to process and apply what they've learned, don't expect it to just come immediately. Finally, she feels we must figure out how to give our bus drivers the skills and training they need to address the needs of the growing special ed population we're serving at this point in time. An aide or two just doesn't cut it in an emergency with, on a bus. So I don't know whether the Regents or she is thinking of proposing some sort of an educational forum for them, or visits, I have no idea how they're planning on addressing this, but she does feel that it's really pretty necessary that they be given more help than they're getting right now. And finally, she states that in this state at the moment, we are dealing with too much pessimism and blame, and that that needs to sort of go away. She's a fascinating woman, we had a great time with her. So, those are those 2. Central New York, Central New York's moving. They're moving their offices, you may have received this in your email, it's gonna be quite exciting. We'll be in with MACHNE, which is the Machinist Association of Central New York, and Partners for Education and Business, which is another, you know, business endeavor engaged in trying to connect with education. So I think in terms of space, it will be ideal, we'll have far more room for meetings and that sort of thing. Set wavewaters into winds, so I think that will go very, very well. And it does provide sort of a direct and strategic linkage between public school boards and the regional business community. Probably not gonna do us much at first, because they don't have a whole lot of businesses in this area, but eventually, my guess is, it will come around and benefit us all. Finally, at Bosie's, we did also look at our board goals, and have decided that sort of, we just tweaked them a little bit, didn't change them much. As I said, they're looking at 17 teachers to be nationally certified, and the possibility of a continuing ed program for social workers. And I think that's about it. I have a goal for them, and that would be, and I think they also aspire to this, that our boards become better informed about what services Bosie's is really offering us. For example, I would like, Angie, at some point, we could look at, you know, how the summer school performance went, what the, how we scored on that, how, how kids were doing.
For students placed at Bosie's?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then sort of, for example, when our teachers have professional development opportunities, have them come back and either, so that they don't have to do 2 reports, maybe have them do it when they do their area, like, report, but at least give us some inclusiveness to how the training went, and, and what, what professional development was offered, what area it spoke to, just so that we as a board have some idea of what their training offerings are as well. Just tighten up that connection a little bit.
Any questions for Douglas? So Douglas, the 17 teachers you're talking about, are they coming from component school districts?
No, they're coming from Bosie's.
There's an incentive of.
Yeah, there is, it's a financial incentive at this point in time as well.
Well, so if you wanna.
250?
Right, there's a small statement, but there's more of, more teachers to go through the professional development that's needed, so that we build more capacity regionally. I'm not sure how far that is spreading, I don't know if we know about it yet, but we've spoke with TST at GST Bosie's, because we want to kind of partner a site, you know, at GST Region as well, so that we can hold more nationally certified teachers who are really, they're on a different level than, well, they're, it's, Master Teachers are, it's a great program, there's a lot of money to support Master Teachers, but nationally certified teachers, they want to, you know, the idea is that they want to learn, their, you know, knowledge is their reward, and they just, you know, they kind of set a different stage or caliber in the, in education, so I, yeah, I.
So Sarah, I, just to give that some framework, I'm a nationally certified teacher, and when I went through the, the process, there was no one regionally for me to turn to or support, which is why these are, these sites are now starting to pop up and say we should support teachers through this process, because it was a pretty lonely process at the time. Yeah, so, yeah, so it's great, it's actually a really great thing, yeah.
It's great professional development.
It's the best professional development I ever had, yeah, for sure.
When were you doing it? How long ago was that, that you were going for that?
It was early 2000, and there was very few people in the state even. I had, if I wanted support in the state face-to-face, I needed to go to Albany to get help with the process, and it's a pretty rigorous process.
Yes, that it is.
And it's a lengthy process, so.
Anyway, we're shooting for it, we have 1 teacher, as I said, who's certified.
It does change the way that you do instruction, it really does, yeah.
So is there an attempt by Bosie's to reach out to component school districts to encourage some participation from them?
We're setting an example.
Leadership by example.
Yes, well, that seems to be something that this area, TST, Keyda, whatever that is, Keyda, OCM, and are, are working as, yeah, exactly, as a joint management team, we're trying to, and with Cornell, it, as central as it is, it makes it a lot easier to do something, and we're all fairly small schools, so it makes it a lot easier to sort of wiggle around a bit without getting in a whole lot of trouble.
Are they offering a stipend?
Uh, for the, yes.
Yeah, why not?
It would be nice to, I would think, as a Board of Corporate Educational Services, if they reached out to component school districts to try and encourage them.
Well, this one.
I don't think it precluded.
This one person did it on her own, totally.
Yeah.
And I think now she's got, you know, she has them excited about it, they want to give it a dry one as well, but once they're familiar with it, then I think, I mean, I don't, does a Bosie's have to approve you to start, no, it didn't. In fact, it's also really.
No, I understand, but.
Yeah, personally, it was expensive, so. I'm sure it was. I don't think any little stipend would have changed my mind about anything. Exactly. Right, right. It's the thought that carries.
Okay, also.
No, any other questions for Douglas? Great, thank you. Administrators' reports, so.
Also, I want to add Michael Cliffs, who's with us this evening, to just bring us up to speed and inform the board about the changes we've had with technology and some of the hip-cups we've experienced and some of the tips and please.
See first, can I go now? Hi. A lot over enjoyed it, fire right over there, yeah. So as a lot of you know, we did a lot of work this summer, and the major thing of the 5 things we accomplished was we replaced the whole data network in the district. Now, the data district, the data network in the district, as you know, has been around for over 10 years, has over 1,000 parts, we replaced over 100. We had to take the whole thing apart, plug it all back together with the new parts, and what we did, only 8% of it worked. 2% of it didn't work. So we went around playing whack-a-mole, trying to address the 2% of the things that didn't work. And some of the things that did not work is 3 of our 120 security cameras didn't work. We needed to reconnect those to the network. Some of our very old technology that was not documented, that we didn't really even know how it connected to the network, didn't work because we didn't know it was there. These were controllers that were put into control HVA systems and boilers, and there was no documentation on this. There was no supporting vendors for these systems. So we learned all about that, and learned how to make them work again. Some things were overlooked in the network. When we originally designed the project, the Morton Building was closed. When we actually ran the project, the Morton Building was open, but it was overlooked in the scope of the project, so once the project was complete, we realized, oh, we have to do the Morton Building too, which we did. On the Wi-Fi network of over 122 access points, we have 4 of them didn't work when we plugged them in, and we had to learn about that why, and make them all work again, and we did. We had an issue with one of the servers that's responsible for delivering the service that's mostly used by nurses, that allows them to receive and send faxes over the network. That system is a, is a very old system, but we were able to bring in a vendor, Finger Lakes Technology was able to help us with that, and we got that back working as well. One of the most difficult and pernicious problems we discovered, we didn't really discover it until Labor Day weekend. It worked all summer, and then the Labor Day weekend, the elementary school offices and computers in the 4th, 5th grade wing all went down off the network.
And he says whack-a-mole, we're the mo.
Yeah, that is, we're trying everything, you know, everything's plugged in, everything goes, I mean, we finally realized that the newer data network switches were more sensitive to problems with our fiber, so we had to actually use different fiber to connect that closet in the elementary school to the core network. Once we used different fiber, everything was stapled again. But it was a very unusual problem that nobody on our assembly team of 24 engineers and technicians had ever seen before. So it took us a little head scratching before we figured that one out, but I think about a week. One of the things that also happened, had to bop our PA systems, which we took very seriously because it's a safety issue. Normally, any of the voice-over IP handsets can place a page through our PA systems and schools, but after the network upgrade, that didn't work. The only way to place a page was over the microphone, connected right to the PA systems. So after some investigation, again, it took a little while because no one even remembered who the vendor was that installed this, let alone documentation or anything to tell us how they were configured, or how they were supposed to be put together, but we began to analyze it all, look at it, and we found, in one case, a missing cable, and put a cable in, and it worked. In another case, a missing cable, but we don't have that kind of cable yet, but we'll have it on Wednesday, and that will go in, and that's in the middle school, and that will work. And in the elementary school, we found that where the cable gets plugged in, some of the pins were bent, so even though the cable was there, it was acting as if the cable wasn't there, so we're repairing the little pins that the cable plugs into on Wednesday. So by Wednesday, all our PAs will be operating as we expect them to, accessible by all the voice-over IP handsets again. But that one took us a little while because we had a lot of learning to do. The other thing was, you know, we have access control systems, these little fobs that let people into doors, well, most of them came back up, but 2 of them stopped communicating with the server that sends them updates. Now, that didn't impact most people except for our new staff, who just got new fobs, because we couldn't tell those card readers about the new fobs. So, how kind of welcome is that, right? If you're trying to open the door, they doesn't let you in. Well, one of those is, is working now, and the other are waiting for some more information from the vendor, because this was another system that. Because this was another system that kind of got installed without any documentation. And in fact, the reader that isn't working in the elementary school, we don't even know where they put it. We've looked all around, but we haven't found it yet. So we're waiting for documentation from the vendor who installed it to tell us where it is. Once we find it, we'll be able to read the little numbers off it. It will allow us to connect it to the network again, just like we were able to do with the middle school one. So there were some really important takeaways we learned in this process, valuable lessons. One was admission critical infrastructure needs to be either on a service contract or have access to a rapid service support measure. If something really matters to us, we either have to have a contract on it so we can get service or know who to call if we don't have a contract. So that wasn't true for all our mission critical infrastructure. It is true now. Infrastructure that connects to the network must also be documented correctly. Not every vendor that has come here to install stuff has provided us a documentation that we need to maintain it and fix it. Some really have barely given us the documentation we need to run it. And that really kind of catches up with us when senior staff leave and outwalks the door, the only real knowledge base of how that system works. So we really need to be more rigorous and Joe and I are on, on one page about this. About the kind of documentation that has to be supplied by vendors of anything that gets plugged into our network. So going forward, this should be less of a problem. But it was certainly an issue with how long it took to solve the problems that came up. Because we didn't have the information we needed to quickly resolve things. We had to source that information ourselves frequently. The other thing we learned on this is it's really important for project leadership to be able to communicate priorities to the team that's working on the project on a daily basis and to be able to quickly connect them with the resources they need to get the job done. Sometimes that, that was a little bit of a challenge because it wasn't really sure whose ball that piece of infrastructure was. And whether that was an IT thing that I should be directing vendors to solve, or whether that was a maintenance thing Joe should be directing to solve. So we kind of had a lot of real time experience in learning how to work those things out. And why it's important to have pre-existing service contracts and vendor support relationships for mission critical infrastructure. And lastly, we learned the hard way that there's tremendous value in the collaboration that takes place between technicians and engineers when they're problem solving in terms of sharing information across silos or different domains of knowledge. I learned more about PAs than I ever wanted to know. You know, different technicians, we learned more about our video security system and our access control and how our boilers are controlled than we ever knew. So, and that has tremendous value. But, you know, it wasn't learned at a convenient time. We're not done yet. We're not done yet. Like I said, on Wednesday, the two, the two remaining PA systems will be addressed, pardon the pun. And there's one other piece of equipment called the fuel controller. The fuel controller is something that helps us automatically do billing for natural gas and fuel usage at the, at the fuel station by the maintenance garage. There's a piece of equipment down there that also went in with little documentation. And so we're waiting for that vendor to come in and reconfigure that device so it's on the new network. And then that will be the last piece of infrastructure that's up and running. We did some other things, but that's, that was a major thing. Now, we also totally readdressed the entire network. It's like if you change a street address on every house in Truanceburg. We did that for every piece of equipment in the district because the district's addressing system used to be private, just local to this community. Now, it's shared with the whole region of Central New York through the Regional Information Center. This really positions us well for remote support and for remote management and monitoring. But it was a huge change. We also moved everybody's data off the 10-year-old servers that could have gone in any minute and put them on brand new data servers. And so everybody's account and all their network data got moved. And that was a, a very large project as well. There's some things we, we didn't get done that we wish we could have gotten done. Expand the Wi-Fi network in places like the middle school office, in the elementary school classrooms. Install charging stations for tablets in the elementary school. Install digital display in classrooms that have been waiting too long. But, you know, we're doing the best we can with the staff we have. And you know there've been challenges around staffing. But it showed up for us as not getting everything we hope to get done this summer done. Any questions?
Thank you.
Sounds like quite a trip.
Questions for?
So I, I guess just a comment. I know that I've spoken with Kimberly about this, but the, one of the things that you mentioned, the learning, was that there's no historical record of why these things were done or how they were done. I guess I think that, I, I would encourage the administrative team to, to maybe look at that as a topic because that came up during contract negotiations in a totally different realm. But you're right, as soon as someone walks out, so for instance, myself, who was suddenly going to take, you know, 25 or 27 years worth of experience out, then, you know, we don't know why a contract three, three times ago, why someone decided that was a good idea, what the thought process was, or, you know, what we got or gave to, to have that in. And I'm sure there are a number of other administrative decisions, whether it's in your department or, or Joe's or at a building level, that, as much as the pain of the neck as it might be at the moment, that that 10 minutes worth of writing down, this is why we're making this decision. And, and that is going to save someone down the road. Maybe, maybe not the person that's writing it, but certainly their successor a lot of time in terms of being able to make the next best decision.
Yep.
A thought for the administrative team in there. Great. Thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you for your time.
Now, we want to just go down the road. I want to talk to Josh.
Sure.
About the middle school opening. During the opening, just an update.
No open open? No, wait, we have an open house this week. Thursday.
I think you meant the opening of school.
Since the opening of school, it's been a great start to the year. All four grade levels are off to a smooth transition. We have most of our staff, though, most of our staff. I have yet to have a day of perfect attendance, but we're working. We've had a couple metal things happen with our, our staff as well, but we've had the good fortune of having people in the wings that have very quickly stepped in, picked up the ball and ran with it, and has allowed us that smooth transition. Going into this week, we do have our open house and we've got, in case you want to go to the games, but you want to be fed, we have the Rotary Preparing Chicken Barbecue starting at 5:00 on the front lawn of the middle school. It's $10 for a half, buttered potatoes, bread, coleslaw, cookie.
My cats out of the game after all that.
Yeah. And we do have the free ice cream social starting at 6:00. And then the doors, the middle school opens at 6:00 and our program starts at 6:30 runs the summer. So there's the opportunity to come, be fed, wander around the building, get a little stint from the grade levels, then move on to a sporting event. So you can have a very cool evening on Thursday.
Questions for Josh?
Great. So the elementary school is up and running and we got a really strong start to the year. We had our open house, the full day open house for pre-K and K. It was very well attended. And the first day of school with just our first through fourth graders, it was just like seamless. They just knew exactly what to do. They were super excited to be back. And then our first day with our littlest students was very, I think was very smooth. We only actually had one student prior, many parent priors, but only one student prior. And it was, it's been a really great start. And we also had the potential to have very, a few positions not filled. But we also had wonderful people kind of in the wings who have filled all of our positions. So we are full today. So. I think we're off to a great start.
Jeanne, just out of curiosity, what were our pre-K numbers?
We have three classes, two at 16, one at 17. And another registered today. They're still coming.
So 18 is that magic number where we start hooking our current test.
We had 48 new students register over the summer.
What's a classroom space like, Jeanne? Could you afford another classroom if you needed it?
If we needed a fourth and fifth classroom, we could make it. We couldn't do another, like another.
Yeah.
But that would, we would have to be creative about where we put speech.
Okay.
But we could make it work.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Jeanne? Thank you.
And I need the other administrators, if you want to offer something. If not, that's fine. We didn't plan for anything.
I can just say it's been really nice being able to concentrate my time in special ed. I've, I was able to go out, I told you one of my goals was to do sort of that day in a life of kids. So I started with our BOsie students. So I've been and seen every one of our BOsies students in their classrooms, met with their teachers, which will go a really long way, you know, helping to transition some kids back. Just, you know, getting, getting out there and meeting some of the kids who I've never met and really meeting in those classrooms. We've had, today we had our first related service meetings. I'm taking the time to meet with our speech therapists, occupational therapists, to really meet with them in a separate group. We're starting an RTI process for related service. We're really hashing that out now as well. Talking about tier one supports, starting with pre-K, K and 1 that they can do in the classroom. So they're very excited about that. I'm excited about that. It just allows me the time to finally concentrate and be present to the building. So thank you for that.
It'd be nice to be able to say to parents also that you've been in those classrooms and.
Right. And it sounds easier than it is, really to, you know, with 20-plus students to get in each, each classroom, meet their teacher and see them during the day was, it was really beneficial to me. It went a long ways with staff and parents, yeah.
I've been spending my time just getting to know places and people. And I, I'll give you a full report next month, but I spent most of last week in elementary classrooms. I've been in all, all those classrooms. And next week is middle school. And I've been starting to meet with teams of teachers. So I'm meeting with grade level teams and department teams to just get to know them and get to talk about what they're currently doing, what their practice looks like right now. So it'll be, I'm slowly getting through everybody.
Thank you. We can move forward?
We can move forward.
The consent agenda, are there items on the consent agenda that people would like to pull so that we can discuss or we can ask questions in detail?
I did have a question.
So, just tell me what you want. You want to pull then we'll, we'll pull that.
G, H, I, J, K, M.
G, H, I, J, K, and M? Any others that people would like to pull to discuss? Hearing no other requests, then may have a vote for approval of the consent agenda of A, B, C, D, E, F, and L, N, and N. Well, I guess we just need to call for a vote, you know, really. So those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. So let's take these in in order. They have a motion for approval of the merger of schools for athletic activity. On the recommendation of the superintendent of the schools, the Board of Education, hereby approves the merger of schools for athletic activity as presented. 2017-18 varsity girls ice hockey with Ithaca City School District. A motion, please? Second? Questions?
Actually, I had already asked my question. It was about the policy for student policy.
Okay.
So.
All right. So I, I think that, just to review that, it's, they will be following our policy. If the district that they're protesting with supersedes that, they will also be following that. So. Any other questions or discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Motion for the authorization to sign a consultant contract with Bonita Davis. Be it resolved with Board of Education of Trumanburg Central School District hereby authorizes school business administrator to sign a consultant contract with Bonita Davis for nutritional services consulting. Motion, please? Second? Questions or discussion?
I just wanted to know like how the expected hours are estimated for the week or, you know, throughout the year for that and how those are budgeted in our annual budget.
So these are special education services. So I'll let Angie speak to that.
Yeah. So they're IEP driven. So we should now, at the beginning of the year, a good estimate of those hours. Currently, for Bonita, she's a private nutritionist. We have one student with a health plan for allergies that she consults on. Very minimal hours. That's all the IEP driven though.
Thank you.
It'll be the same for the, the next two as well.
Okay, yeah. I had the same question.
Okay. So those are both private consultants that Bruce and.
So technically, we, since we've separated these houses, probably ought to follow the protocol of saying that. So again, this would be an area that when Kimberly, in her previous life, was presenting the budget, would say, this is a budget line that is overstated in anticipation that we might have special education needs for students that require services, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So whether that would be a placement either here or someplace out of district or the need for consultants. So that line, when we go through the budget process this year, will again probably inflate it in terms of the actual hard costs that we absolutely know that we've spent for these areas.
So the students have history with us from year to year. We're able to plan for those expenses. So when Gary said those, those lines are inflated, that's to plan for the students that we don't yet know about or new services that we may feel they would benefit that we've looked at during the school year that we're not budgeted. So. But for these historical students, we can plan for every year and we base it on the previous year's expense. Typically, it's a three-year average that we've got.
I can tag on that we bill back many of these services. These are for students often who are in private schools who lead and hold the CSC responsibility for creating that IEP or receiving that IEP. We then bill back those services predominantly to Ithaca Watkins.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing done. Call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. So Joanna, could we just put together I, I, and J?
Yes.
Okay. So those two authorizations for a consultant contract with Bruce Halli and authorization for a consultant contract with Amanda King. Motion to accept those, please? Second?
Second.
Okay. Questions or concerns? The same, the same question. Okay. Any others? Hearing done. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. K. Oh, Douglas, I see your name popping up.
Well, I've got to be nice for you.
To nominate someone, to, or to appoint someone as a voting delegate for the Trumanburg Central School District based upon the recommendation of the superintendent. May I have a motion, please?
Some of it.
Second? Okay. Questions and discussions on this?
Yeah, I have one. I will be going up.
This is for the New York State School.
For the Association. I will be headed up Sunday, definitely, which is the day that, probably Saturday night, I guess. But reservations sold out within 15 minutes. And so there's very, very limited. And so there's very, very limited space in, in the town itself. I think it's like twenty to thirty.
Wait, class?
It's like twenty to thirty minute drive from the nearest. So what I was hoping to be able to do would be to just either drive up late Saturdays, spend the night someplace on the way, because quite honestly, the, the facility is not that large. And if you look at the program offered, which came in the latest onboard, there really isn't all that much there. So I think I prefer to spend my money on rural schools and just, I'll do that. And I believe I can do the voting without, I can be voted in as a voting member without having to have signed up for the conference. So I checked on that and I'm, I'm safe there. So yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Thank you, Douglas.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. So any, any questions or anyone fighting to buy for Douglas's position in this capacity?
No one from two, there's no, nobody has responded to that.
Very few of us are going at all this year, because at least I'll do this.
Hearing no other questions or concerns, those in favor? Douglas's nomination?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? You're it, Douglas, thank you.
Question, yeah.
Sorry, too late.
Now, at some point, you're gonna have to do a little work on me. Does everyone have a copy of the resolutions booklet? Does anybody have a copy of the resolutions booklet?
I have an email that I'll forward.
You do, oh, okay, great, because I think if I'm going to do it, I, I would like to do it in an informed fashion, not to sort of win. Thank you.
And then a motion for the acceptance of M, please. Authorization to sign an agreement with the County of Portland, be it resolved that the Board of Education for the Trumanburg Central School District, hereby authorizes the superintendent to sign an agreement with the County of Portland as presented. Second? Questions or discussions on this?
Why? I just, yeah. Why are we signing it?
This is, Don Cutrache is our extra classroom club advisor for the staff club and is compliments the work that she does with those students. It joins them with a larger group in Portland County.
Thank you.
Is there a financial obligation attached to this or?
No, in fact, I think they provide her with a small stipend.
Larger group as in other schools as well?
Correct.
The purpose being that then everyone is sharing more information and.
And they've done things like ropes courses and, yeah, it's for the students and more active regionally.
Other questions or concerns regarding this? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, absent? Motion passes, thank you. New business. Motion to accept the seeker as presented. I won't bore you with reading this entire page. If I may have a motion for approval, please?
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, questions on this?
I know that Jo isn't here, but I just wanted to know where these installations, I guess, of the cameras or how that came about.
So we have been part of the Capitol Outlay Project for this past school year was to have cameras installed at various locations over the campus. Some of them have been for parking lots, a lot of them are in hallways. So I don't have the exact locations for the new cameras. I just know there were still some areas in hallways and such within buildings that did not yet have cameras for surveillance purposes. So we can get an update from Jo the next time he's here. The seeker resolution is really formality, saying that it's the least invasive, it's a level two.
And it's also for carbon monoxide detectors?
I believe that in this next Capitol Outlay Project, they are not carbon monoxide.
Oh.
But we'll check on that.
Do we have cameras on our athletic fields, like football fields and that?
They're not on the football field, they don't leave parking lots. Some, and not all parking lots at this point.
Is that part of the long-range goal to do, to do that? Or does this sort of complete what we think is the long-range goal of cameras?
I don't believe this gets them out to the fields. I think it completes what we need in terms of the buildings and the blind spots that we still have.
Other questions or concerns? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Acceptance of donations, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent and the Grateful Board of Education, we hereby accept the donation of a hundred and fifty dollars from the Trumanburg Foundation Incorporated for the staff's breakfast that was presented on September fifth. Motion, please?
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Questions or discussions? Thank you, yes, to the foundation. I hope it was here that that day, the opening day, to bring us an update on that. But this is certainly a very small token of the amount of money that they donate to very worthwhile educational and curricular projects throughout the district. So we thank them. So those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions or opposed? Abstentions, motion carries, thank you. An appointment of support staff, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of the schools, the Board of Education, hereby approves the support staff appointments contingent upon successful completion of the fingerprint process as presented. Motion, please?
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing done, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, and this time we can be sort of to open forum. So at this time, we'd like to give all district residents an opportunity to ask any questions about the intended or about operations within the school district. Personnel matters will not be addressed in public session. Comments may be recorded and will be responded to by the Board of Education or the superintendent within twenty-four, forty-eight hours. May I say the keeper comments to five minutes or less?
I'm just coming to visit.
Okay.
I'm here for open house and I was gonna stalk some people here.
Would you like to stalk them in the open public center or not?
Okay, I'll take three minutes. I'm trying to set up.
Just for the audience at home?
I'm Rose Hanson. And I'm trying to set up this event called the Great New York Big Apple Crunch, where everybody around the state eats an apple at two o'clock on October nineteenth. And I'm just seeking approval from some principals I haven't heard from and if it's okay with you, Kimberly. And I've got apples donated from Cornell Orchards. And I just wanted to begin hitting up some other people, so.
Well, now they're on public notice, so I'm sure you'll have a response.
Okay, and so one of the things I was interested in was doing like a Facebook Live of all the kids eating the apples. So I know there's issues with kids' faces, et cetera, et cetera. I didn't know if that's a big problem with people saying they don't want their kids' things posted, but I thought that would be super fun. And I have a friend of mine writes for the Hot Potato Press and she was gonna do a big article on it. And then I thought we could get press from Cornell. So John must be in the building somewhere, he would be.
It's, yes, obviously high school overnight, so.
So that's all. So just email me back if everyone's okay with it or has issues or something they wanna discuss. And I'll go talk to people's teachers and. You guys just looked so serious, like you weren't having fun at all.
Oh, well, we appreciate it, we made it our lives. Thank you very much. Okay, board forum. Before we start looking at the schedules and dates and times for committee meetings, any questions or concerns?
Let's ask one more thing. So I really wanted to get like a big screen, like TV or computer, to be able to put menus up on in the cafeteria. And I was asking John if he had any around. And he was saying he had requested some for the library and somewhere else. And then I didn't know if I could like just do a community ask. And I didn't know if we're allowed to like solicit in the community for people who have like leftover equipment that they wanna donate.
So we'll follow up with an email?
Okay.
With you.
I didn't know if there was policy or anything like that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. I really.
Board forum.
Will you look at the committee's schedule?
Yes, but I just wanted to, before we started, then, were there any other questions, discussions, comments, things that were on your mind that we should be talking about or bringing up?
Not necessarily talking about, considering, but there's one more day left for the library book sale and tomorrow is the Name Your Own Price. And there's a lot of books there. And they're not just picked over, there's some really excellent, excellent ones. And it's just fiction and nonfiction and covers all the other bases.
CDs and movies.
CDs and movies and, yeah, lots of. And as I said, you can't beat it, you name your own price. Walk in with a bag and tell them, you know, give them a buck.
Same thing as I mean the.
Next week we'll be paying you.
Anyone else? All right, in terms of trying to get committees, let me, I guess, turn this over to Kimberly there.
So let's cross off the simple ones first. So looking at policy, does everybody know which committee you're on?
Uh huh.
So policy.
I'll say no for the general. I do or don't. I'll sacrifice.
So for policy, I have Jane, Joanna, Douglas and Lauren and myself. And I would recommend that policy meets monthly.
Agreed.
I know at one point we had talked about five o'clock meetings. I think policy often runs over that, so.
It does.
I don't know if somebody wants to suggest a time of day, but I don't, I really don't think we're gonna be able to fit all these in at five P M.
We were staggering policy and nutrition.
Okay.
Doing them back to back at one point, weren't we? Like Jane?
I think it was the same people around the same.
Yeah, that could be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It looks like there's some carryover.
Yep.
So food service, though, I would say probably only needs to meet quarterly.
Oh, yeah. We, we very rarely.
If we were to have policy meeting at eight thirty A M, does that?
That's really good for me, the earlier the better, yes.
Policy at eight thirty. Is there a preferred daily?
I will deal with you later.
Yeah. There goes the front of Douglas.
Sorry, sorry.
You can do very strong. You better do the Irish clock if you get that hour.
Yeah, you, yeah. All right, so Jane, you pick the day.
That's right, I could just stay up and I'll catch you later.
Exactly.
And we'll put it with eight W one day.
You have a choice.
You choose.
Usually like the third Tuesday of every month or something.
Right, all right, so let's make it the.
Tuesdays are not good, that's for the foundation.
I think Thursdays.
Let's stick with Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday was really good. That works better for the administrative team and.
Second or third Thursday?
I do the, let's keep it the second.
Second.
Does that work for you? Because that should be the last time and that's unconscionably.
Right.
And that's quarterly?
No.
Policy is monthly, nutrition and food service is quarterly.
Right.
Right, and so the nutrition and food services would follow the second Tuesday at.
Oh, Thursday.
Second Tuesday.
Or second Thursday at.
Quarterly.
Right after policy.
I would say ten?
Yeah.
So we have a policy case.
Never, yeah. But I don't think we aspire over now, then now.
Okay, so that crosses two off. Athletic, I would also say is probably quarterly. Sorry, that's Sarah, Gary, Michelle, Jason, Jo, myself. Any preferences?
Two with Johnson here.
I think time, like four thirty on.
So I think that may be hard with Jason, like the week he coaches year round. And it would be critical to have him there, so I think it would have to be before the school day ended.
Before you go to work? Is that a possibility? Or is that too early?
Yeah, but it, could it be earlier than eight? Like do, earlier like seven thirty? Or is that too early for folks? I mean, I mean, I can.
Definitely, seven, seven thirty and, I mean, he would be there at seven forty-five. I mean, maybe it's different. Or seven forty-five.
Yeah, we should just do seven forty-five.
But I'm not sure if he has the first period of class.
Oh, gotcha.
So again, he would be eliminated showing that.
Well, if John could cover, have it covered on the ones of order, I mean. So once every ten weeks, he's gonna miss.
So good point, okay. So athletic is seven forty-five, what day in the week?
I think Thursday.
It's seven, you know.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Um, let's not do a Monday or Tuesday, let's do Wednesdays. And what, second to third? Stick with seven, because they're all the same week.
So the first meeting would be October eleventh?
It's a whole chart.
But it's, you're saying second Wednesday is at seven forty-five?
Correct.
Okay, our first meeting is October eleventh at seven forty-five and.
Angie, CSE, CPSE, they believe quarterly. That's Diane, Sarah and Angie. Is it quarterly?
Usually three times in a year, we can do quarterly.
So three.
Who are the committee members, I'm sorry? Sarah?
Sarah, Diane, Angie, Diane.
And I was on that as well, at one point, I believe. Yeah. Oh, maybe.
No, I, I counted.
No, I don't think it's. Not the same fish.
Okay, so Douglas, you're in.
You just buried it in there.
So you were.
Oh, that's right.
Your date in mind, have to read in the.
I would defer to their schedules. I tend to be really booked between like two thirty and four of them after school. Plus other than, can you come to the?
Do you wanna do another morning?
I'm more. Oh, dear.
You can do an afternoon, why don't you do an afternoon?
It's fine with me, but, I mean, I'm probably too flexible.
We could do like close to four in the house too. I mean, I don't know if it works for you, but.
I think we could do. I think that would be a real.
Nice idea.
So five o'clock on a Monday, three times?
I just asked if we didn't do December, Canada, December working.
No, December. Okay, so we'll pick those dates. Facilities I would like to wait on, we just, we just received some reports back from State Ed. There has not been time to even review those reports, but facilities will be meeting frequently, so stay tuned on that one. And I don't believe that before board meetings is enough time for us, so.
We love that one.
Those will be much longer. It's Gary, Sarah, Diane, myself and Warren. And Jo will also be present at those. Finance and Audit Committee, we have Gary, Joanna, Michelle, myself and Warren. We do have one coming up on October second. So one has already been scheduled at five P M.
Is that before four?
No. No, it's, it's actually about the audit, the audit that's close to completion at that time. Honestly, I just think they only meet once a year.
One day, twice maybe.
So we may have two meetings and one is already scheduled, so. Last year's that leaves us. Transportation is Gary, Michelle, myself and Jo. Michelle and Gary, preference?
Michelle.
What's the frequency there?
I would say three times in the spring. More so in the spring. Because I would really like to review some of the work that is happening this school year and look at how we approach next summer and scheduling and letters and communication and that type of thing, so.
So like a really spring date?
Yeah, I would, I would say maybe like a. Yeah, I would, I would say maybe like a January and then a March and an April.
Yeah, which should be just...
Time of day?
So January, March, April, yeah, we should just choose the same day for those three months.
No, do you wanna do an early again for your schedule?
Dating would be great.
Let's do 8:30. And day of the week? Mondays work.
Mondays are not so great.
Right, Mondays. And Tuesdays, and I think we already have, what do we do, the Wednesday?
We have quarterly, 7:45 AM, athletic, Thursday.
So we could have Wednesdays, but we'll avoid the athletics. So we'll just choose the same.
Yeah. So will you send, I'm guessing you'll send out invites?
So I think what I'll do is I'll make a chart that you guys can hit me on before I start blasting everybody with invites, if that's okay?
So that takes us to community engagement. Joanna, Jane, Diane, myself and Lauren. Michelle, are you not on there?
I'm not.
Michelle! This is your baby.
Well, I, I, I did wanna overcommit, I mean, I'm no use if I do too much.
Someone's gonna have to step off anyways because we'd have a forum, would we not?
Yeah, we have three, yeah, we have three, so we're, we're good. Joanna, Jane, Diane.
But I would be happy to like come to the first one. But so there is an ongoing Google Doc that I don't know, that we might have access to that you could read it beforehand just to, I mean, really there wasn't a whole lot of, I feel like that committee had, you know, Bigfoot riches on that, but just to have the, we had all these really big ideas and then the follow-through just, you know, there just wasn't any time, there wasn't anybody to really carry the ball, so. So it'd be good for those who are on the committee now to just review it and you could get coffee sometime if you wanted.
Do we wanna do a 3:30 or a 3:00?
How often do you want to?
I would say quarterly.
How long do those meetings usually?
What time, Joanna, the work call for you?
I could do 3:30.
Okay. A preferred day of the week?
Same day that I love a day here.
Poor Sherry.
Shelter line.
Just how many times did you say this?
Four times.
Quarterly? The first one being this quarter?
Excellent question.
Yeah, sure thing.
And no Tuesday, no Mondays or Tuesdays? But I could, I can do any day of the week.
A Tuesday would be fine if it's afternoon. Do you want Tina to choose some day?
Tuesdays, no, Tuesdays are break days.
A Wednesday is good?
Wednesdays are good.
Wednesdays, a Wednesday? Wednesday 3:30, okay, and Tina will propose some dates for that.
Can I just say no October 25th?
Great, thank you very much for all the extra time that this will entail. Any other questions, comments from the board and under board forum? Hearing none may have a motion for executive session for matters relating to collective negotiations and also matters relating to the appointment of a specific particular person.
Where are we, who's second? District office?
District office. Thank you to everyone else.